Welcome to the City of Dania Beach, City Commission, regular meeting. It's Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, 2023 at seven PM. Clerk, Deputy Clerk, could I please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Hold on, there you go.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James. Commissioner Salvino. City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
Ralph. It won't let me start the meeting.
It's telling me to enter, I'm entering, I've entered three times now.
Can I turn her on? Oh yeah, see? It's on, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, can we all have a moment of silence, please? Everybody bow their head. Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for item three point one, we have a presentation by the Green Advisory Board regarding recycling.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Lombardo, Chair of the Green Advisory Board. And do I still have to state the address? My address, or?
Your address is right, yeah, the address.
Yeah, please state your address.
Fourteen oh one Northwest Tenth Street. Thank you. I'm coming to you today to, I guess, share some information that we've learned from waste management and also some possible solutions for mitigating contaminated recycling. Our board member Alexis recently reached out to Waste Management and we were given some stifling statistics. It costs Waste Management one hundred and fifty dollars per ton to process intermingled contaminated recycling, as well as it's a lengthy process to begin with and it's costing them a lot of money. It affects the product that they put out to their suppliers as well with the recycled goods. And we have fallen short of our recycling goal, which was set back in two thousand and eight for seventy-five percent recycling. We've fallen short by twenty-five percent at fifty percent. And so our number one goal today is the Green Advisory Board is to share this information and then propose some solutions to start the process of mitigating this contamination. Vacation rentals seem to be one of our largest problems. If you are on slide three, you will see some photos of recycling bins that are full of yard waste as well. Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So here you'll see that there is some yard waste in the recycling bin here as well as styrofoam containers, which do not belong there either, as well as yard waste at a different location in July. And then our final photo shows construction waste, which has taken up both bins. And so the main problem is the line of communication we have with all these different sets of people coming in and out of these homes. You have the owners, you have the guests, then you have contractors, you also have cleaners, you also have landscapers. None of these people seem to be aware of the policies of proper recycling and therefore this is the result. I believe the communication is not very possible at getting to all of those different parties. So our board proposes that after repeat violations at the same properties, we revoke the use of the recycling bin and in some cases maybe replace it with a second trash bin. This is a list of tips that was distributed to short-term rental owners in Dania Beach. And from what we've seen, we haven't seen any difference. So our first solution would be to remove the recycling receptacles from those short-term rentals. The second would be to replace it. And the third would be to just change our overall policy and how it's collected, which hopefully down the line we won't have to resort to that. Fort Lauderdale has, what I would say is the preferred plan of the Green Advisory Board, which is a four-stage communication process. You get four violations for contamination and then your bins removed. In Miami-Dade, there's an example of a few of the violations that they put on different bins there that have been cited for contamination. And then also Destin, which this one's a bit extreme and I'm hoping we won't have to resort to this one. They actually require short-term rentals to use a valet trash service. Here we have a quote by Beam Fur, who is a huge supporter of sustainability in our county and his opinion of our recycling practices are it's hanging on by a thread. It's also been on the decline since two thousand and sixteen. This is a copy of the Waste Management email where it goes into the lengthy process of how they deal with the contamination and the added costs. And ultimately stating that the added cost costs the municipalities more in the end. So it seems like our solution is really here at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lombardo. Commissioner James?
Yes, hi Laura, you can come back. I have a few questions, thank you for that, thank you for the information. I think we've heard something similar, but...
Yes, Alexis tried to give this presentation remotely and the power went out in the building he was in, so...
Yes, yes, yes. I want to know what happens when we are short of our goals, like what are the consequences to the municipality or to us?
Well, are you under a monthly or yearly contract with Waste Management? Does the price of their services fluctuate?
So I don't know that, but you said that we were twenty-five percent short of our goal.
Of our recycling goal, so it was set in two thousand and eight.
So yes, I'm wondering, should we have looked at that in the fifteen years that we've had to maybe get aligned with what's really happening now? But I just wanted to know, like if we are twenty-five percent short, there's no immediate fines that we are receiving that you know of that Waste Management told you about?
Not that I know of. I believe the goal is more or less saying, it seems like people are more aware of recycling and more people are actively trying to recycle, but ultimately due to the lack of awareness of what actually is supposed to go into the bin, it's not turning out to be successful. So I feel personally, when I go through the streets, I see more recycling bins than I've ever seen. It makes me happy to think that people are putting forth the effort, but the awareness isn't there and the wrong things are going in the bin.
Okay, and then my second question was, you gave us three options or three, yeah, three solutions that we could take. So for that third one, you were saying that we should possibly enact a policy. What type of policy are you referring to?
Besides giving contamination warnings and taking bins, we haven't really come up with any other solutions. We were kind of wondering what your thoughts were. Commissioner Davis actually came to our last meeting and really enlightened us. Even though we are on the board, we don't feel like we've necessarily been included in the inside of what's really going on with the trash and the recycling. And being able to, she was able to visit a facility and actually see the people hand sorting, it really hit home for us that we're not getting it right. And this presentation's been on the agenda for a few months now.
Okay, well, I'm open to entertaining anything that definitely puts us in the right direction. I mean, it's not about us, it's not about us fifty years from now, it's about our children's children, children that have to live on this planet. And so anything that myself, I could support in terms of coming down to being more effective and environmentally friendly, you have my support for it. And thank you for your service on the Green Advisory Board.
Thank you. We also do have a couple of other solutions we've been talking about, possibly coming up with a magnet that's similar to the Bulk Trash Collection Guide for inside. I think it's important when the people are creating the trash to create that awareness because by the time they're already going out to the bin, they've already made up their mind which bin it's going in and it's going in no matter what that bin is going to say. Ultimately, I think the magnet would work and also stickers to put on either inside receptacles or outside receptacles as well. Thank you.
Am I done? Laura? Laura?
Laura, please.
It's my turn. So I hear you and I understand some of the things about the recycle bins. So if the recycle bin comes up and the people are unaware, which is one of the biggest things, whether they think recycling plastic bottles is plastic, but if you put a plastic bag, it's not. So there's a lot of confusion on what the recyclable products are. So I think maybe what should be done again is with your magnets, on the list on your magnet should list the products that are recyclable. And I think that we could probably find that in our budget somewhere, that we could probably print that up and hand them out like we did our magnets that we do for our recycle, I mean for bulk pickup. Along with that is, I guess, since you and Commissioner Davis maybe saw the plant and how they separate, when you're talking about a hundred and fifty dollars a ton, if there's one item in that recycle bin that's not correct, does that apply to like a small item or does it apply to the whole accumulative part of that hundred and fifty dollars a ton? That's a question you're not going to be able to answer, but the point I'm saying is that we have to decide on what's going on there. Then you also mentioned about the fact that if, about citing one, two, or three, four times, you know, or the fact of removing the recycle bins, you know, in my opinion, I'm not sure what it costs us for a regular, without getting into specifics, which I'm sure the city manager could come up with, but if, let's just use common numbers, if it costs them five dollars a pickup, you know, for the homeowner, for a green, the regular garbage, if it costs five dollars for a bulk, I mean for the recycle, if they get cited four times and they have a second thing, maybe the fine should accumulate to an annual fee with the second can would cost us as a city to pay for the second can so that we don't have to worry that they're not going to recycle and let them put it in the can and let them pay a higher fee for, through the fine, not a monthly thing where it would offset the difference in, you know, listen, this costs you twenty dollars this fine, fifty the next fine, a hundred the next fine, and two hundred the next fine, that way that pays for that second can that they wouldn't normally get. And I think there's a way that we can work that out. And I think there's a way that we can work that out. But the question is, is how do you know what's in that recycle bin unless you go open the lid every time? So I mean, there's a few things, but there are, there are some solutions to at least alleviate, I would say 50 to 75% of the problem.
Just being made aware of a fine, I think would definitely motivate some people.
Well, give them, give them, give them the idea of what they need to do, then make, make, on the bond they're saying, you will be fined. So, I mean, those are just some ideas and suggestions I have. Thank you.
I think that's a great solution. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So this is more of a recycle problem or Airbnb problem?
Hmm, it's a little bit of 50/50. I think there's a lot of homeowners and residents that aren't aware of how recyclables should be treated and what the reality that, you know, egg cartons have a different canister at Publix, so do plastic bags. I don't think people are really aware. And so I, I see it more with the short-term rentals. And unfortunately, I've also seen short-term rentals completely disregard their trash cans and the bags are just piled around it. And that's really a problem. I think short-term rentals is an easier place to start because you have a going roster of all your registered vacation rentals. And then therefore you can send people out to those specific addresses.
Okay, yeah, my issue would just be almost like special privilege, like people would be requesting an additional trash canister when it's unnecessary, you know, just to have one. And, you know, that could clog up the streets, especially that we all put the trash cans in the front, in the front of the streets now. I do like what you said, how Fort Lauderdale does the valet trash service. And I know that they have private trash service. I know it's kind of extreme, but, you know, I think for the vacation rentals, if they have a violation, they should almost be required to hire a valet trash service. I do agree with that.
I think a hybrid of what Marco was saying earlier about the fines paying for the can, that seems like a win-win to me.
And when you talk about a sign to put on, you know, there is a label on the top of the trash can that tells you what you can put in, what you can't put in. Usually the people who, you know, who don't follow the rules, they don't care to read it. You know, so I almost feel like that, that's, it, it, it's, it's good intention, but I, I don't think it would solve the actual problem. Like you said, when you want to make something known, you kind of have to hit them where it hurts and that's in the pocket. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Thank you. So, and, and I think you just hit the nail on the head. Part of the problem is, is that some people just don't care. And especially if it's in a vacation rental because it's not their house, it's not their problem. As far as they're concerned, they're just throwing out their trash, if they throw their, throw out their trash. And they're not really worried about that.
And it's also the people cleaning. Sometimes the guests aren't even using the receptacles, it's the cleaners.
Right, and what, what my concern is, is doing something like this, the legalities, first of all, as to whether or not we would be able to put together any type of legislation about it or any type of fine and enforce it. And then what the cost is going to be to enforce it, to be able to enforce it. Because it sounds to me like this is going to be like an extra code thing that could end up costing a lot of time and money for code. So, and I don't even know, it might even, I mean, because that's been one of the things with the, with the vacation rentals too, is that trying to enforce everything, I mean, you just need an entire department just to do just that. So I'm just wondering if that's, can we get some sort of an assessment maybe?
If, if I may, through the mayor, I think some, some great ideas have been discussed here. I'm, I'm looking at Katia, and, and I think that we should start with some sort of social media awareness campaign and try to get an article also on, on the Dania Beach Press. Get more information out to the people to, to inform them. And, but, but I agree also with what the mayor is saying. There are people that don't want to do it. But I think that, that if we, if we have a game plan and we put that game plan in place, give ourselves, let's say, you know, X amount of months of, of this media campaign and we'll, we'll use our Code Red and all the avenues that we have to communicate to our people, I think that would be a very good start. We don't want to get in the business of having our code officers going into people's garbage cans and, and being garbage police because there's too many things that, that, that would be astronomical. But I think it's a start to at least give us the opportunity to inform people and to also let them know what the consequences would be if, if this continues to happen. You know, particularly the photos that you showed where people are just putting things that don't belong in, in the blue bin. But it's a start and it's, and, and thank you so much for your service to our city.
And, and that really hits home on one of the Green Advisory's long-term goals, which we included in our budget over the last couple of years too. Creating short little social media videos. Because I've noticed on the Channel 78, it's just a PowerPoint slide with, I think, the tips that I showed you guys in my slides. To me, that's not effective. It doesn't get me to look at the screen. It doesn't make me want to read it. If you have real people doing real-life scenarios saying, no, that's not right, I think that will catch people's attention much more. And we had, I think, four different spots we wanted to do and recycling was one of them on our social media 30-second.
We have five elected officials that are, that are very good on, on camera. We could do it in English, we could do it in, in Spanish.
I think that's a great idea.
But I think it'd be great to begin with education awareness and do a full-court press in, in regards to this and, and the benefits. And then also let them know what's coming, you know, once this time has elapsed and you, you've all been informed and we can work together to make this happen.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Last one, sorry. I just really wanted to thank you for inviting me to the Green Advisory Board meeting. It was a very healthy conversation with everyone there and the, the fact that you guys care so much about our city and the recycling process. I, I hope that more of, of my colleagues will come and, and visit your meetings because it was truly beneficial to have that conversation. And I think we also need to extend that conversation with the county, with County Commissioner Beam Fur. We are working on an inter-local agreement with the Solid Waste Working Group. And so to have everybody, you know, pitch in and, and that we're working in a collaborative way and making sure that everything is aligned with what we want to do with our city is also with what we're planning to do with the counties, with the inter-local agreement. So thank you so much for all of your, your presentation and informing me. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. It honestly brought our 2023 to a roaring start.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Lombardo. We won't sweep this under the rug. We definitely want to tackle this head-on. Okay, for the next item 3.2, we have a special event request from Goodman Public Relations for Tri-Rail Fund Day.
Yes, Mayor, all the department directors have gone through this request and we approve it. And it's happened in the past and it's a very good event and we recommend the approval from you and, and the city commission.
Yeah, I see it's been happening the last several years. I don't see why not.
I'll make a motion to approve.
In the matter, she already seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's been passed. Okay, we have no proclamations. Now we have citizens' comments. May I ask Mary Jane Misich? Please come up, state your name and address, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Mary Jane Misich. I'm at 4731 Southwest 43rd Avenue, Dania Beach, 33314. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I'm here to present some petitions for our neighborhood. We're against vacation rentals or vacation homes in our community. We are one-family, single-family duplex community on 43rd Avenue and 43rd Terrace. I walked up and down, took petitions, I have them here in this envelope. And I went to the Dania, to the Griffin Road Civic Association meeting and they signed it too. I mean, it's a very, it was established in 2011. Prior to that time, you could prohibit it. So we want to make sure we can contact our congressmen, our senators to have it eliminated for the future. I mean, it's a lot of security problems. We just noticed this right now with the recycling. The owners should be on, the owner, he should be in there separating that garbage. We don't give him another garbage bin and we have to recycle. So they know they recycle in their communities, but they don't recycle when they're on vacation. Same with the security. We had a shooting in one across the street from us. I've got the police report. They didn't want to communicate with us when they vacation. They don't want to say hello, they want to be part of the neighborhood. And we need that in our community. And also the value of the properties are going way up. People think they're going to make a lot of money from them. So now the public, the workers here in the community can't buy a house, can't rent a, a house. It just goes, the, the prices just keep going up. I would hope you would bring it up as a legislative agenda item when you go to Tallahassee. And I hope the public will look to their state representative and their senator. Mine is Hillary Cassell. And Jason Pizzo is my senator. So I, I really thank you for your time and I want to present the petitions to you right now.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much. I'll give this to the clerk. Thank you, Mrs. Misich. Misich? Misich?
Misich.
Misich, thank you, Mrs. Misich. I appreciate it. Okay, for public safety reports, we have Captain Danny Marks. Good evening, Mr. Marks, Captain Marks.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This afternoon, we had a captain's meeting and majors and colonels with the sheriff, Sheriff Tony. It was a great meeting, very informative. We actually learned a little bit about, more about the, the new training facility. It's a $50 million training facility. And, and when I say it's top of the line, this thing was going to have everything. Mental health, nutritional suggestions, all the, anything we can imagine. Weights, shooting range. So all our new recruits are going to have access to that and all our current ones are as well. It's going to be a great addition to our already great training. I also found out that we have several academies graduating and, and our new folks will be coming in and, probably the second round, they'll probably get to enjoy utilizing that facility as it'll be done in probably around seven months or so. A couple of good arrests we had that I'm really proud of. One was for a serial burglar that committed several burglaries here in our city. Our crime suppression team detectives followed the suspect and watched him actually commit the burglary. The suspect was arrested without incident. Our detectives also arrested the suspect responsible for the December 27th homicide, which occurred at 712 Southwest 10th Street. The suspect was interviewed by our detectives and provided a full confession to the murder. So he has now been charged with first-degree murder. Another great case was right here at 300 Sheridan. The subject was known to have a felony violation of parole warrant for several violent offenses and BSO, well, BSO robbery contacted our crime suppression team to inform them that a warrant was being walked, walked through for carjacking with a firearm for an incident that occurred Saturday night here in Dania. Surveillance was established at the suspect's possible residence and he was observed exiting his apartment and getting into an Uber. They conducted a traffic stop and he was quickly apprehended and detained. A loaded Taurus 9mm handgun was recovered from his pocket. The subject also was found to be in possession of cracked cocaine packaged for sale and MDMA. A records check revealed the subject is a 10-time convicted felon. He was charged with possession of a firearm by convicted felon, carrying concealed firearm, possession with intent to sell cocaine, and possession of MDMA along with two felony warrants. Another one, we had a, this one's kind of interesting. We have a known frequent flyer and one of our deputies recognized him wearing a mask going around the house. So he got him as he was running away from the scene before he could even think about committing a crime. We were made aware today from the, the Fusion Center, what provides information, it's information sharing for all the law enforcement agencies. Made aware of social media accounts and websites that are supporting the forest defenders and labor, labeling their acts of sabotage as acts of protesting environmental justice. There's a call to take action where protesters are asking for donations, attempting to recruit individuals for the Stop Cop City campaign and encouraging individuals to call B&amp;G Construction Offices and demand that the company withdraws from the Cop City projects. On January 18th, 2023, during a multiple law enforcement agency clearing operation in an attempt to clear protesters from the Atlanta Police Department's training facility building site, a protester fired a shot hitting a Georgia State Patrol trooper. The individual who fired upon law enforcement was killed in an exchange of gunfire. B&amp;G Construction Site has a site here in, in Dania Beach. It happens to be the Spirit Headquarters. So we're on top of it. Our, our detectives are constantly watching it. There's also a site in Weston and I believe one in Coral Gables. So since we don't have all our bodies yet, but they're going to be trickling in, we were utilizing a deputy that, I've actually recognized him here, his name's Lamar Blackwood. And he wanted to work midnights and, and go out and locate any homeless individuals or individuals needing assistance that weren't out and about during the day to see if there was any, any changes. It's been a, a huge, it's been a great thing for us. He's located several and been able to locate a couple vacant properties where we've actually had some problems and locate some people trespassing within. We've been working closely with code enforcement on that and will continue to make progress as time goes on. By the next meeting, I met with the city manager and, and assistant city manager this afternoon as well. And I contacted, I'm real good friends with the, the lieutenant over homeless outreach for the sheriff's office. We were actually roommates back when we first started. And so he keeps me up to date on a lot of good programs that are out there and he brings new programs in. And I said, hey, we're due for a program. And he said, well, I think we got one coming up. We'll meet next week. What it does, it's going to be a pilot program and I don't have all the information yet or when, but probably thinking a good start would be like mid-February if we can get everything in order. But all, all it really is, and it sounds so simple and it sounds so beneficial, is we're going to house a, a social worker within our state, one of our Dania Beach offices. And they can actually ride out with our homeless outreach and take a lot of the burden that they have from providing assistance, such as obtaining driver's license, doctor's appointment, social security, helping them get plane tickets, bus tickets. And then that, that way our homeless outreach can go move on to another resident. So I said, that'd be a great idea. We'd welcome that in a heartbeat. So I will keep everybody posted on that. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Captain Marks. Commissioner Salvino?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Captain Marks. That, that was nice. I liked to hear that last part about the homeless outreach you have going on. I have a question though. When you, I guess, I, I might have asked this question multiple times and, and I, I don't remember the answer, so I'll ask you again. You know, when you pick up somebody that has two felony warrants on them and they've been, been arrested 10 times, why are they out there?
I can't answer that. We do our job to find them, locate them, and take them to jail. We also interview them for any additional crimes.
So when that, when they go to jail and they get out on the bond and even if they already have one felony there, they let them out?
Out of our hands.
Back again, they let them back out. So you've done your job, but our court system is not, is what it sounds like.
We can, we can make suggestions, which we do oftentimes, depending on how many times, but ultimately it's up to the attorneys and the judge.
Okay, do we ever have an opportunity as a sheriff's department to have a, some type of a communication with the, with the judges and stuff like that? About not letting them out?
We've, we've done it with the, with the attorneys before on a case that we don't agree with the outcome. And if we really don't agree, we'll take it to the next stage for a, a meeting with the, the next in-line, which would be a major or colonel. And it's been successful on some.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What can you do, like raise their bond or?
I've only worked in one place where you can raise someone's bond and that was Henry County back in the day. But it was beneficial because you were the one experiencing all the actions that that person committed. So it was beneficial and it's a lot smaller community, but.
No, it's just a question.
Yeah, it's, that's, the courts have it all set.
Commissioner James?
It's very frustrating to you that you do that, that you have to pick up the same person over and over and over, you know?
It, it is and it can be, but as long as our troops are out there doing their job and doing what they're getting paid to do and keeping everybody safe, that's all that matters.
Thank you. I have two questions. One, I know that there's another city or maybe more than one other city, but I know since BSO has their own real crime center, I wanted to see if there was a program that we could kind of emulate that I think Miami Gardens do. So any new business that has surveillance, it has. So any new business that has surveillance, it has to tie in to the, the real crime center. They have to purchase their own type of attachment to the system that will tie directly in. And that way, you know, when we're having crimes and we need that surveillance and they have that real-time monitoring, they could tell where the car is going. They can really track it in an effective manner. I'm not sure, well, obviously BSO doesn't have that mandated because, you know, with all of Broward County, that would be crazy for them to try and manage. But I'm not sure if there is something similar that we could do in the city, seeing as though we, you know, we are a city that has some concern with crime, just like any other city. But what are ways that we can kinda make things better for, better quality of life for the residents that are coming in?
I agree. That would, that would be beneficial for, for everybody. I think that's more of a question for, for legal, if that can be mandated upon new construction of any sort.
Well, no, I'm asking, do you, do you all have the capacity to even house that type of program here in Dania Beach versus Broward County?
We would, we would tie it into our real-time crime center. But yes, there is a, a program out there that, where we could house it somewhere. But I don't have the prices. Sorry. It also ties into the different LPR systems and security cameras.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to look, I would like to look into that.
If I can be recognized, Frank and I, along with our Director of Technology, went to the Real-Time Center and we are working on bringing something back to be affiliated perhaps with the Real-Time Center itself, to get our equipment up to speed. Because the equipment has to be compatible as well. And maybe Frank can talk it more detail because he is also very much an IT person, as our, as is our director. But we are looking at working on this to bring it forward to you all.
Thank you. Right. So are we speaking of something just specific to Dania Beach? Like the, like City Hall or the entire city?
It would be the entire, or as many people that wanted to participate. We've already gone out, they're working with the Dania Point right now, which is huge. I believe the casino and our deputies, even when they're out on burglary call or suspicious person call, it's a little card that has all the information and you just scan it and it brings up the application for any business. It's made so simple. And I can, I'm personal friends and coworkers with a lot of the employees down there. So whatever questions that I can't answer personally, I cannot even have them come do a presentation here. That way, anybody in the audience can really get the details. But I'll tell you that little card, I have thousands of them in the office. I think we've even brought them here out in the lobby. It's, take as many as you want and pass them out. Because the more, more assistance we get from IT and the technology out there, the better.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll listen to what Frank has to say, but I do know that you can't mandate it on new businesses. I'm not sure about being grandfathered in and legalities with that. But I know like the city of Miami Gardens, you cannot open a new business with, with your surveillance and stuff without it being tied into the real crime center.
That's great.
Yeah, so I'll get that information and give it over to you all so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. You know, we already have people that have done that research and know, you know, the legalities of it. And I'll get it to you all. Frank, then I have another question for you, Danny.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, so as Eve, City Attorney Boots has mentioned, we recently met with BSO at the Real-Time Crime Center to see how it all works. Also with Daryl McFarland, our IT Division Director. And we're working with them right now to, we're getting a quote. There is a cost for us to connect them with their system. The first thing we wanted, we needed to know was whether our system can actually connect to the BSO system natively. And it can. They do play well together. So we're just waiting on getting a proposal. It was right before the holidays and there's a process and it's just taking a little time. But we should have something back very soon and we don't anticipate it to be a very high cost.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My second question, the incident that happened a while ago on the beach with one of our employees, was there any update on that or what was the final decision?
Was that the battery? I can, I can look into it. I believe it was a battery with the employee.
Yeah.
Is that the one where the employee got terminated or?
Yes.
Okay. I have not followed up on that due to it being a misdemeanor that nobody's even asked me a question about, but I can find out.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Also Deerfield Beach, who I spoke to their captain today at the meeting, and he invited everybody here up to Deerfield because they do have, they have their own little mini real-time crime center there. So, and they also have a great LPR program, which I spoke to the city manager about this afternoon. So anytime you want me to schedule it, however easy it is for you, they have a great PAL program as well that we can, we can look at and see if it fits the mold of our city and what we need to do here. I could set it up. It can either be all at once. We can drive one of our buses up there or do it separately.
All right, just get with Maxine. She can get us all together.
Can I go?
Anything else?
Yes. I just wanted to, the, that, the hooking up to the system, that's, you're talking about the city of Dania Beach itself. You're not talking about the individual businesses. Because you and I had talked some time ago about cameras with the, with the businesses and that there was an ability to actually hook up to the individual cameras at the individual businesses if they wanted to. It was a voluntary program.
Yes.
So is that the same thing or is that?
Same, exact.
Okay, so.
It'll intertwine with all the city once all the programs and, and equipment communicate.
And you're talking about outdoor cameras, correct?
Well, we have, we have abilities inside schools, everything.
Sure. But I mean, it would be something that's.
I guess it would be dependent on the entity that wanted the cameras.
Right. Okay. That's, I just, I know we had talked about this a long time ago. I feel like it was.
And I think I spoke about it here, not to take up too much time, but the Real-Time Crime Center also, once they're aware of a crime, say it was on federal highway somewhere, and they're able to pull up anybody on probation on an ankle monitor in that area when that crime was committed, which gives us additional leads.
Yeah, right.
So the, the program's invaluable, in my opinion. It's proved to be in multiple cities already.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure it was the same thing because I know, I mean, I remember you giving me a card. So anyway, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Okay, Chief Pelissero, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and the great citizens of Dania Beach. So on Saturday, January 21st, our fire units responded to 75 Northwest 13th Ave to a multifamily dwelling. We had 20 apparatus on scene. These included our fire trucks, our EMS trucks, battalion chiefs' trucks, and other specialty units like our tower ladder and our hazmat truck. A total of 83 personnel worked this fire scene. This call took just under three, two hours to complete. We were able to assist eight people that were displaced by making contact with the Red Cross. Fortunately, there were no injuries to any of our residents or the fire crews. Then again, in the early hours of this past Monday, January 23rd, our fire units responded to 158 North Federal Highway with visible smoke and flames coming from the residents. We had 17 apparatus on scene with a total of 62 personnel working to keep the fire in check. So this is where it gets really interesting. Our initial fire crew ran into the home and fortunately saw a man in the first bedroom or bathroom and assisted him out. Thanks to their actions, seeing him under the heavy fire conditions, he's still around today. This call ended up lasting about two hours and 40 minutes and both of these fires are still under investigation. You know, I will bring our crews up here next month and recognize them because it, you know, it takes a lot of effort to be able to just catch out of the corner of your eye. Just being able to see something move and, you know, just something, you know, it was really a miracle under those heavy conditions for anybody to see anybody. Because what I was told earlier, one of our police officers that was here, he, he went in there initially because he was the first one on scene. So he's a hero also because he went in there and he couldn't see anything. So he ran out and fortunately our guys were able to see this person. On February 7th, our EMS chief, our assistant, on February 7th of this year, of this coming month, our EMS chief, our assistant chief in charge of fleet, and one of our lieutenants that used to be stationed here out of Station 1 until his recent promotion will travel up to Wisconsin to do a final inspection on our new fire EMS vehicle. This truck will go in service April 8th of this year. So I'm looking forward to that and, you know, again, I can't thank you enough for all the support you've given our, our fire department to, you know, better serve the citizens and visitors of Dania Beach. Our fire truck, Quint 1, as we call it, because it's got aerial ladders capability, is currently in Georgia and it's being totally refurbished. That includes fixing the damage from when it was hit a couple of months ago. The ETA for that truck to come back will be sometime in July. So I will let you know when the new truck is here and then we'll do a station visit and also wet down the truck and put it in service. So thank you for everything. And if you have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, let's move on. Now we're on item seven, the consent agenda. Are there any items that you would like to pull from the consent agenda? Commissioner James?
I'd like to make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Do you have a second? Second, all approved?
Aye.
All right. Consecutive, the consent agenda has been unanimously approved. Now move on to public, we have no bids and requests, so we'll move on to public hearings, item nine. So.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, ma'am. Could you please read item 9.1?
Absolutely. It's ordinance 2023-001. Please note that this item is to be continued. It is an ordinance of the city of Dania Beach approving an inter-local service boundary agreement with the city of Hollywood in Broward County for the contraction of certain lands located within the jurisdictional limits of the city of Hollywood and with the area known as the city of Dania Beach Oceanfront Park and the annexation of the land by the city of Dania Beach, providing for conflict severability further, providing for an effective date. This is second reading. It is a city attorney item. If I may, the item is being continued as FDOT is still reviewing the draft inter-local agreement. They're meeting this week actually, on January 26th, to go over the, the final terms that have been presented by the city of Hollywood. And I hope to hear from them by the 27th or the 28th. Because of their review and in case there are any edits that need to be made, I want to, I am asking to defer this item to the March meeting so that we have the time to discuss with Hollywood any edits that may need to be done. Hopefully there aren't any, but if, just in case. And additionally, the city of Hollywood's second reading should go before our second reading so that we know that we have, we're dealing with the final document. Then we can do the reading on second reading for our version of the inter-local agreement and finally go to one reading before this county commission. The county commission always comes last. So if you don't mind, I'm asking for a motion after you open up a public hearing on the request to defer the item to the March meeting, March 1st, March 14th meeting. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Loelen?
I was gonna, if there was.
Make a motion?
I was gonna make a motion, but I think it's a public.
It is a public meeting and I believe a commissioner has a question.
Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. Why three, three more meetings before this? It seems like we keep dragging this out.
It's two readings of each commission. So it's two readings of the city of Hollywood, two readings by us, and the last meeting is the county commission.
Right. So, so we've already, this would have been our second meeting. Hollywood has already agreed. FDOT now wants to read.
Hollywood has to do one more reading.
Okay, but if we had agreed tonight, then, then it's, then we would pass our part of it. But then Hollywood has to go back there on their second, pass their part. But FDOT has now stepped into play where they want to readjust things. Is that what you're saying?
They're, basically they're looking at the final terms presented by the city of Hollywood to make sure that they're in agreement that the city of Hollywood would get to park in our facilities for four, five-year terms without paying for that ability. And so they're looking at that.
And it takes three more meetings for it to get back. By the time we get done, it'll be next year.
Hopefully not. I'm hoping that by the end of March, we can get this done or.
Can I ask if, if everything's resolved before the, by the last meeting in March, could we move it, I mean, February can move it up if everything's done?
If we can move it up, I will certainly do so.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Commissioner James?
Yes, my question is similar, other than, the question is, if we voted on this today and it passed and the city of Hollywood voted on theirs, if everything aligned and after the county says yes, then it's already finished. If the county does have additional comments on it, could we just come back and do an amendment?
That would take another two readings. And so the idea was, I was trying to avoid having many more meetings to get it done in one shot. And it's not the county right now who has the problem. It's FDOT who would be giving us the access to the land to be able to build the parking garage.
Okay, okay. And we couldn't say we wanna accept it with whatever comments are coming? Or we would have to have.
Well, Hollywood has to accept it as well and that's the problem. Hollywood may not accept.
Okay.
Yeah, Hollywood's reading will be before ours.
Yeah.
Mayor, you know, I thought that we had already resolved all this issue with FDOT that if we had Hollywood approve this in the beginning, what?
I did send it to FDOT. They were looking, I didn't realize it at the time. They were looking at the original version that I had written. They signed off on that one. I brought it to their attention, look, just to be clear, this is Hollywood's conditions. And they said, look, we didn't look at that. We need a little more time. We're meeting on the 26th.
So even though they approved the first part of the, you sent, now they wanna re, they?
They wanna look at the 20, on the 26th, they wanna look at the.
If they agreed, why, how can they change it?
The original agreement did not contain any parking for.
Hollywood?
Hollywood, because that was not part of our proposal.
Can I entertain a motion? Oh, this is a public, Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I would just like to get the dates for everything. Because we have the 26th, I wanna know the dates for the Hollywood meeting. And when it comes back, I just wanna get a list of the dates for all of those. I don't know if you have them now or if you can get them to us.
Thank you. I do not have them now, but as soon as I get them, I will email everyone all the dates.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Everyone has a right to speak on this item. Does anybody wish to speak for or against this? Okay, can I entertain a motion?
I'll make a, make a motion to continue the item to the next, what is, do we have to say the next meeting or?
It's the March 14th meeting.
To the March 14th meeting.
Motion for continuation. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Salvino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Motion has been continued. Ordinance number 2023-001, it's been continued. Okay, Eve, item 9.2.
Thank you. It's 2023-002, an ordinance of the city commission amending Chapter 28, the Land Development Code, Part 8, Technical Appendix, Article 811 Public Art Program by amending Article 811 at Section 81120 definitions, Section 81130 Public Art Plan and Implementation Guidelines, Section 811-40 Art and Artist Selection Criteria, Public Art Program Guidelines to require compliance with procurement guidelines, Section 811-130 Public Art Advisory Board, excuse me, and Section 811-140 Mural Guidelines to clarify that all murals and artwork, whether purchased with public art funds or not and whether donated to the city or purchased by the city or a third person, would require review by the Public Art Advisory Board and a recommendation from said board to the city commission, provided for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date. This is second reading. This is a community development item. And there is a revised memo on the dais for item 9.2, which is what this is. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Corinne, Corinne LeJoy, Assistant Director in Community Development. And while this is second reading and I did make presentation at first reading, I do want to bring to your attention that there was a modification to the ordinance in front of you between first and second reading. We changed the definition of public art and we included a locational requirement, that public art had to be within public view of a public right-of-way. And public right-of-ways are streets or sidewalks. Any art that is installed outside of the public view of, of public right-of-way is considered private art and would not fall under the provisions of this ordinance and would not require Public Art Advisory Board to review it and make recommendations. So what that means is a business might have an art garden in the back of their property that's not visible from public view, that would not require, it's coming before the commission or the Public Art Advisory Board. If they had a mural that's also not seen from the street or roadway, that's considered private art and would be excluded. private art and would be excluded from this ordinance as well. Um, the rest of the ordinance is the same and was voted and approved by this body on first reading. And I have, I'm available if you have any questions on the item.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Everyone has a right to speak on this matter. Anybody wish to speak for or against this item? Okay. Can I entertain a motion?
Nine point two.
All right, do I have a second?
Commissioner Davis also second.
Commissioner Davis, second, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it for ordinance number two zero two-three point zero zero two. Okay, Eve, uh, nine point three, it's another community development item.
It's a resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six. It's a resolution of the city commission approving the waiver of replat request submitted by the property owner of the city of Dania Beach for the property generally located at two three zero southwest first court in the city of Dania Beach, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This is a community development item.
Good evening, again, Corinne Lejoy. Um, this application is requesting the commission to waive the replating requirement associated with the vacation of right-of-way. It's regarding Molokin Park. Um, on paper, there is a right-of-way, an unimproved street on both the north and the south side of the park. We haven't improved the, those right-of-ways, there's no streets there, there's no plan to be a street there, so we're going to move forward with vacating those roadways. And as a result, that, um, half of those right of, of that land would be given to the adjacent property owner. This vacation would expand Molokin Park by forty linear feet. However, to do that, our land development code requires replating unless the commission waives that requirement. So that's what we're asking today, for the commission to waive the replating requirement so we can move forward with the vacation request. And I'm available if you have any questions. Oh, I do wanna add that we did, um, notify property owners within a thousand feet as we do all of our public hearing items. We did get interest. People were concerned what was happening to their park. Once I explained the plan, people were pleased and were relieved to hear that information. So there was really no opposition, just concern and, um, inquiries.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I'm hi Corinne. Did we do the same thing with CW because I feel like we did something different?
CW was different because there was an easement running through the center of it that got in the way of the buildings that were being proposed. So we had to vacate to allow a building to be placed there. This is different because it's on the perimeter, so we're vacating these roadways and giving the, the park more land, so it's gonna expand.
But why couldn't we waive the replating requirement that we're doing now?
We did waive the replating requirement with CW Thomas. Um, and then what you, I think, remember is the vacation request required additional meetings, so that's what I think you're remembering is.
Whatever had to go back to Broward County, that I was told they had to go back to Broward County 'cause, 'cause some, 'cause we had a road going in the park.
Um, no, I think we needed a letter from Broward County saying we didn't need to plat so that when we came to you, we can say, we don't need to plat, the county's not making us, commission, please don't make us. I think that's what we asked for, was the letter from the county confirming that we didn't need to plat.
Okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Everyone has a right to speak on this matter. Anybody wish to speak for or against this item? Okay, we have a motion from Mr., uh, Commissioner Salvino. I have a second from Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it for resolution number two zero two-three dash zero zero six. Okay, we are done with the public hearings. Uh, section ten, discussion impossible action. Uh, we have, uh, Commissioner James speaking regarding the sign code and murals.
Yes, I thought we had asked staff to come back with some language for us to look at it. Nothing happened with that? No, everyone's looking surprised? Okay. Well, that's not, I, I know that we had spoken about it at the last meeting, uh, regarding the art in public places and we were talking about signs and you guys said we were gonna look into it. Well, I didn't, um, you can move on. Well, no, if nothing's prepared, then we can, we can move it to the next meeting. But I, but I would like, um, staff to come up with some changes that you all said that were kinda antiquated with the code and the signage that's making things, uh, difficult.
Candido Sococruz, Deputy City Manager. Commissioner James, you're correct, we are working and we're gonna be updating not just the art, mural, uh, sign component, but also our business signage.
Yes, that's what we were talking about. That's what we were, that's what we discussed at the last meeting and we were saying that because certain businesses always have to come back here for variances or permission because, you know, if the sign is one inch higher than it's supposed to be or larger than it's supposed to be and increasing that visibility, especially with our downtown district, to invite more, um, patrons in our businesses.
Correct. What we're looking at is currently we have different districts throughout our city and each district has a, a specific set of criteria and guidelines for the signs. We're looking to see if it's possible to do a, a holistic, uh, criteria set of, of guidelines for the whole city. So we're looking at taking the benefits of certain districts and applying it overall, globally, citywide. Additionally, we're looking at seeing what other cities are doing, our neighbors, to incorporate the best that they're doing into our, our code. Uh, at the second meeting of February, we plan to do a presentation and be able to present to you all these new amendments that we're gonna be proposing and hopefully get consensus to move forward with the implementation.
Okay, well, we don't have to put it back on the agenda until we have something definitely from staff that's worked through it. That's, I think that was the intention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, item ten point two, resolution of the city commission regarding, uh, the Totor art. Eleanor?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. So this is a request for a public art donation, um, by Stefan Bolanaro, Bolanaro, Bolangaro, I'm sorry, um, to donate one of his Totor collection pieces. The artist was born and raised in France, spends a lot of time in South Florida, and his Totor, um, collection is a whimsical art sculpture that intends to create joy and playful fun for observers. Let me see if I can get this working. Is there a delay?
Monica? Oh, there it is.
There we go, okay. So the sculpture is, um, approximately nine feet tall. It's made of a, well, now what happened? Can you go back? Can you go back one slide? Sorry, guys. Do you wanna control the clock? Next slide, please. So it's a sculpture, it's about nine feet tall, it's made of fiberglass resin. It was inspired by the artist's mother's Jack Russell terrier. The sculpture is coated in a UV protection paint and should be polished four times a year. The, the, um, the appraised value of the donated sculpture is about forty-five thousand dollars. Um, and if you could play the little video that's on there, you can see they, um, incorporated the Dania Beach colors and logo on the video, but I'll show you, hopefully. You can see a, at the bottom of the picture, there should be a, no, okay. All right, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so I'll just keep moving. So however, the sculpture is free, um, there will be some minimal costs to the city, which will be the shipping from the, from France for the sculpture and installation of a concrete base to secure the sculpture on. Um, with the donation, um, it was reviewed by the public art board and discussed at length. They've also provided a few, um, locations that they recommend. Um, as you can see, the city hall park is one, Tiger Tail South Lake Park, and then Frost Park. At city hall park, um, if you remember from the city place development, they are going to improve this area in between city, um, hall and the parking garage to incorporate a small passive park, a lot of green area. We think this is a great spot for the sculpture. It has great visibility, it's centrally located at city hall, there's many visitors that come here, there's special events that are held at this location, um, a lot of parking available in the garage, and it also has twenty-four hour security as well. Um, the second location the board recommends is the Tiger Tail South Lake Dog Park. Obviously, the theme of dog and dog park. Um, it has a, a nice entrance, um, in the right-of-way that could be utilized. It has great visibility, there are, also is parking available, um, and visited by dog owners. We think that would be nice. Um, and then Frost Park was the third location they recommended. Also, great visibility, parking available, many visitors and special events held at this location. I know the parks, um, director is going through a parks master plan, so it could be incorporated in that design somehow, some way. Um, so like I said, the public art board did, um, review and discuss and recommends the city commission accepting the donation, um, and they have provided those three locations. Staff also agrees with, um, accepting the donation and we recommend the city hall park as the most recommended location because of the reasons I stated before. Um, if you have any questions, I'm here. Sorry you didn't get to see the video, it was really cool. He turned around and you got to see the back in front of the skateboard, which incorporates the Dania Beach colors and the Dania Beach logo.
Commissioner James?
Oh, I can email it to you guys after so you can see the full view. It's really nice to see that three-D view.
Please, thank you.
Yes.
Um, yes, I, I love the concept of the dog park. Uh, I think that it would invite dog lovers and their pets, um, to have Instagrammable moments, if you will. Um, it's a place where a lot of dogs would be. Uh, my only concern, uh, of having it like at a public place is the maintenance of a lot of dogs, um, congregating here and, um, their waste and, and having to make sure that owners are responsible enough to clean up behind their, their animals. But the dog park is a dog on a surfboard at the, at the dog lake. I, 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 that's, that would be my, my vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Salvino?
What's the cost of moving it from France?
Oh, I didn't say that, I'm so sorry. It's about four thousand dollars and the base, to build the concrete base, we're estimating between five to six hundred, so we're saying it shouldn't exceed five thousand dollars total for the shipping and installation of the base.
That sounds like a pretty good fund to come out of the community development department, right?
Sure.
Because you're, actually, you're building something with it, right? Why couldn't use your funds?
Well, we have the public art board.
I know, but that's the art we're putting on top. We can use your concrete funds for years.
The art is being donated, but it's up to you guys to decide where the funding comes from.
I'm trying, okay? Um, I agree with, uh, Commissioner James on where that should go. I think that, I think a dog, in a dog park and a board near water would be, that'd be my vote as well. So if you're out for asking, uh, the board for their, that's, that's where I'm at too.
Commissioner Davis?
I like the dog park, um, for the obvious reasons, but I'm also looking at the amount of traffic and I think that city hall as well as, uh, Frost Park, you have the art and seafood festival, you have the, um, bike, uh, motorcycle event that's coming up this week. I mean, that's where we get thousands and thousands and thousands of people and I would think that that's really kind of where we would wanna maximize where we get that. Yes, I think the dog could eventually draw more people to the dog park and to those locations, but I think, uh, the whole purpose, since this is, you know, really the second piece of public art, that we wanna start getting people to have those Instagrammable moments where we have thousands of people present. So I think the most trafficked location at this point is Frost Park, so I'm leaning towards that, even though I don't hate the dog park idea, so, or city hall.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Couple of things. Um, so the dog park location, is that outside the fence or inside the fence?
Yes, we, the board recommended outside of the fence, so it would be easy, accessible. You wouldn't have to pay to get into the dog park. I know the dog park is, um, managed by performance pups and they do charge a small fee to get into the park. Um, so we were recommending outside in the right-of-way.
So my concern with it being outside the fence is the, the security issue, which we were talking about, because we've had a lot of issues with graffiti and whatnot, and I would be concerned that that would get tagged on a regular basis because it seems to be happening more and more everywhere. Um, and if there's no cameras or anything or any security there, then that's a concern that I would have with that. Um, secondly, they all, also, isn't there still an issue with Tiger Tail Lake?
Yes, taking into consideration everything that we're discussing, the, the main concern for, for these pieces, it's a forty-five thousand dollar piece, is that, no, graffiti is, is something that's, that's a, that's a, a problem in, in, in South Florida. I think the, the piece, um, is gonna attract a, a, a lot of visitors as the former piece that he donated in my former city. We have it by, by city hall as, as Commissioner Davis, um, knows. Um, I also want you guys to take into consideration the, the arts and entertainment district that we're trying to.
That's what I was gonna mention also.
Create here. I want you to take into consideration, um, our, our holiday events, the events that we're hosting here in city hall that continue to grow. But remember, we wanna be aligned with the arts and entertainment district and we have security here twenty-four seven.
Right, and that was one of my, um, things that I was gonna say, is that if we, if we are developing this arts and entertainment district along First Avenue, it would make more sense to have multiple art pieces that people can actually go from piece to piece and see the different art sculptures. Um, plus, there is security, um, so we wouldn't have to worry as much about that. But I know, like, I, I, we were talking earlier about Tiger Tail Park and I know that there, they've had the issues with the lake with somebody dumping and I understand that there may be even more significant issues. Is that correct or no?
Eve, Eve has been, we wanna brief you a little bit on the.
So we've gotten a preliminary report back and it looks like it may just be some settling of concrete that may have been put into the lake, but we're not, you know, we're waiting for the final tests. Right now, everything seems to be within limits, but by the end of the week, we should have all the results back.
Okay, so I thought, I thought there was something else that was going on there, but anyway, okay. But I still think, my vote would be for city hall just because I think it's, make it into an area that people can walk and enjoy the different art pieces, but that's, and, and the security factors as well. So that would be my reasoning. Plus, well, actually, one more reason. Frost Park, we're actually, we do have a plan, we have a, a parks master plan that's being worked on. And are we, maybe I'm talking out of turn here, I don't know. Um, do, are we planning on consistently keeping events at Frost Park all the time or are we going to, once it's redone, are we going to try to, you know, use that more for parks purposes as opposed to events?
Um, good evening, Commissioner, Eric Brown, Parks and Recreation Director. Frost, Frost Park would become a stadium, so those events will go away once the, uh, construction started Frost Park. So, um, even if it was to go to Frost Park, it would have to be uplifted and put somewhere else eventually.
Okay, so again, more reasons why.
We'll probably be looking to, excuse me, we'll probably, we'll be working with Daniel Point or with the casino, 'cause if we're gonna invest money in these parks for tournaments and things like that, um, we, we cannot have, you know, those events.
Motorcycle show this year and then maybe next year, but after that, it'll be a baseball stadium, so it'll be kinda hard to have that. And also, we need to look into, um, Tiger Tail because I know we own the lake. I'm not sure about anything else around the lake that we own, but I know the lake is Dania, the city of Dania's.
Right.
So I'm not sure if the property belonged to us, so we need to look into that.
So, and again, and more events taking place in our arts and entertainment district as well. So it would be the most heavily trafficked, so, okay, that's, that's my, my two cents on it, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Salvino?
Yeah, I like talking. Um, you know, the, I understand everybody's, you know, thought about, you know, this piece and my, I don't look for that moment, I look for out a little bit further. And the reason I'm looking out a little further, arts and public places has just started with our weather vane out front and we have two million dollars roughly sitting in our arts and public places, plus mu- much more coming. Uh, we have that beautiful piece that's gonna be put down near, near the beach with the million-dollar art piece that's, uh, being put up by the Milton Company and that's, uh, that's beachy type of thing near the beach. The reason I state that is that, you know, you have a dog park, so we put a dog, a dog in the dog park. And just because it's a, it's the second piece of art, I think we should start placing these pieces accordingly to what they accent to and that accent is the dog park with a lake, with a surfboard that is water, or, so I'm looking at that concept that it's just because it's a piece that's donated, it's a wonderful piece, you know, the thing You know, the thing is, is that it seems more fit to be near the water where there's a dog park. Now, I understand your concepts of being this and that, but you know what? We can't worry about every time we put something someplace that they're going to have graffiti or we're going to have this problem. You know, if it gets there and if we all decide wherever it goes, there's a problem, you know, you unbolt the four bolts and you lift it up and you move it. You put another $500 slab somewhere. So I, I think we need to look outside the box a little bit and place art where art looks like it's supposed to be, not because there's a traffic flow. Thank you very much. My time is up.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Commissioner James?
Yes, just to kind of piggyback off of that. Listen, we've put art in places that does not have surveillance. We have that mural that's right there on the First Street Bridge. I don't think it's been tagged. And if it's been tagged, it's been removed and it hasn't been an issue. We have another bridge that has art that Commissioner Salvino worked on on federal highway that doesn't have surveillance or security there all the time. And I do agree, I think that as we dive into art in public places, we, we definitely need to look at citywide and not just concentrate all of it in one area. I do think that we do have funds if we decide to put something else here at city hall that, that kind of makes more sense. I, I just love the option, just to look into it, maybe, maybe it's not even feasible, but maybe it is feasible to have it there at, at the dog park where dogs frequent and people walk their dogs. They don't even necessarily have to be going into the dog park at the lake to be able to enjoy it. And, and it provides a visibility. We have, we are a very transient city. We have a lot of new people that are here who may not even know that that dog park even exists. But when you see a dog, when you see, you know, the surfboard and you know that, that is something for animal lovers to, to be able to frequent. I mean, I've lived here all my life and it wasn't until, I don't know, 10 years ago that I even knew that the dog park existed. And that's because I went to the other part of Tiger Tail and, and enjoyed those other amenities and activities that they have over there. So I just wanted to, to, you know, and, and speaking about graffiti, that's why we have this art in public places board, to make sure that we're using the right material and they can coat it and seal it with whatever y'all need to, Eleanor. So that way, it's easy to clean up if, if there is a mess. And then when you, if we, if we seem to realize that, okay, this is a problematic area. I mean, I think that we could, we could possibly move that, but those are just my additional comments after listening to the rest of the comments.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, Eleanor, what is the parking capacity over there with the Tiger Tail Park? What is, like, how many?
It's limited. There's some, there's about 10 spaces outside of the park and then inside the park, there's a few more spaces. I'd have to count to find out exactly how many, but it's not as many as obviously the parking garage.
I would like to know that number because the visibility is really important to me and to be able to have...
There's 10 parking spaces is what I'm being told.
Okay, so then that wouldn't work for me. 10 spaces is not going to bring the, the level of visibility that I would want to see for that. And so, so then I would switch over to city hall.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that I hate the idea of the dog park. I just, yeah, I just, it, it's, and I, and I understand what you're saying. But we do have, we have animals all over the city. We are a certified city for pets. We do have doggy bags all over the place in different locations, which we can put there to make sure that it's done. It's just, you know, and, and I go to that park. I go to Tiger Tail Park. I've taken my dogs there. And, and, you know, it, the parking is terrible. It's, there is no parking. And my other concern is also, like you said, if we own the lake, that's one thing, but we don't own the rest of the property. So now you have to get permission from somebody else. And I, I mean, I love the idea of putting it there. I just, I don't know that it would work and I don't want to see us have to spend more money to move it down, down the road. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Salvino?
Last, last comment on this for me. I think, you know, it's, it's more than just place it there for, for the traffic of the park and the people to drive by and take it an Instagram moment or stopping to see something. It's like a sign in front of a business and it attracts you to stop and say, hey, that looks cute. Let's take a picture. So, I mean, that's just my thought. And if you really want to put something here at city hall, I'll just make a statue of myself and I'll pay for it and donate it.
Ralph was able to get the video. If he could just show you real quickly.
There it is.
How it's the colors of the logo and then the actual logo's on the back of the, and it's on a skateboard.
Eleanor, I have a question. Is, is this completed already?
Has it been fabricated yet?
Yeah.
I don't know. I have to ask artists.
Or is he going to build it upon completion or does he have like, you know, ten in the warehouse?
I'm sure it's going to be...
Yeah, I just want to know what the time would be.
Once we get, get commissioned, then he'd start the artwork. I don't think he'd start before he had an agreement with the city.
Okay, okay. Okay, and also, there's no more comments on it. Can we vote on the location now? I'd like to, I'd like to vote on the location now, yeah. Okay, look. Okay. Everybody who, by show of hands, let's do a vote. Yes, yes. By show of hands, all in favor of Frost Park, raise your hand. All in favor of city hall, by show of hands, please make your vote known. All in favor of Tiger Tail Lake, by show of hands, please make your vote known. Okay, it looks like Tiger Tail Lake has it. Three to two. Let it know that it's passed. And now we can move on. Thank you. All right, item 11, we have commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to remember all the events. I usually write them down. But the first one that's coming to my mind is the, it was my first time attending the Martin Luther King Weekend Celebration Gala Parade. And I really enjoyed the gala. I really thought that it was a great showing of our diversity in our community. I was glad to see a lot of our county commissioners come out to join the event and celebrate with us here in the city of Dana Beach and bring a little bit more awareness of the unity that we, that is much needed through our city and counties and our, our residents as well. I, I also attended the parade for the first time. I had a great time. I don't know if it's a marketing or what, I just rather had seen more people to be able to participate. I know it took a lot of resources to shut down the US One and all of that. And so it would just be really good that if we could, I don't know how we do it, market, get the people out, but I really felt that the residents should be, we should have more residents, try to get more residents to participate in, in such an activity. Next, I attended the Broward League of Cities with the commis, county mayor. Lamar Fisher was the keynote speaker with his initiative. It was a great turnout. He has a community collaboration and communication initiative that he's going to be working with the cities to move us forward. And that was held at Dana Point in the city of, at the Marriott right here in Dana Point. Very well attended and it was a very good look to put our city on the map a little bit more with the other cities. Lastly, I, the one that I remember is the Prestige Club that we attended this past Saturday night. Commissioner Salvino and I are both on the board of directors for that and they raised money for a lot of good reasons. I mean, a lot of good causes, sick children with Memorial Hospital. And we did the Christmas holiday thing where we gave a lot of gifts out to all of Broward County, including kids in Dana Beach. So this is an organization that reaches a lot of people and, and was very, very, very successful. So I hope that we can support that event in the future. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Sorry, I want to go back to item 10.2. We voted on the location. So now I just want to know if we can pass the resolution. Do I have a motion to pass it, to accept it? All right, Commissioner James made a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn, excuse me. Okay, back to commissioner comments and we'll go on to Commissioner James.
Yes, thank you. I want to discuss CW Thomas Park, Mr. Brown. I, I don't know if we can have an update or what we need to do next. I am really concerned that this is falling by the wayside. I know I'm very impatient, but I, I have a lot of community members holding me accountable for this project.
Yes, and hopefully we will have something to bring back to you guys very, very soon on the 31st, on the 30th, I'm sorry. I will be getting numbers again for CW Thomas and it's not falling by the wayside. I can promise you that. We are working diligently trying to get this project off and running.
Okay, thank you.
As a matter of fact, if I, if I may, through the mayor, Candido, myself and Director Brown met today because the challenge was that we had set aside X amount of dollars, 18.5 million dollars to be exact for, for this park. When the new quotes came in and all the challenges in between the, the recession and the cost of construction, rebar and everything, it skyrocketed in, in excess of what, 30 million?
Yeah.
So, so we met with them and we sent them back to the drawing board, not to lower the quality. We heard you all loud and clear and, and that's not how we roll, but to phase it in, to give us a, a, a big phase one and, and to think outside the box. And, and that was the game plan and now Eric is going to be meeting with them next week. And then our goal would be to come back to you with the phasing and what the options would be.
Okay, when you come back with something, can we vote on it at that meeting instead of having to wait for an additional meeting?
Yeah.
That would be my request, to give us the information beforehand so we could look at it.
We'll bring you the design. We'll bring you everything that would be included in phase one, the cost and the game plan.
And, and just to, just so we, we very clear, Commissioner James, I could have come to you guys a month and a half ago, but it would have been $12 million over what you approved. And just like the manager said, it came back to us $12 million over budget. So when Candido, so it's accrues and the manager, myself, when we met with BNA, we came up with something that was nice and I think it's going to be very stunning. It is very stunning and I think everybody's going to love it. So I got a chance to get a sneak peek of it, so it, it's going to be grand and it will be coming back to you soon.
Thank you. Second, I would like to thank the MLK organization for putting on, the Renaissance Corporation, sorry, for putting on the festivities for the weekend. Thankful for those of the electeds who came out to participate with us. I, I too agree that certain things could have, could have been done. What I do, I'm going to bring to the CRA is to, one thing I did notice about it, knowing that we just have a lot of, our, our business district is, is struggling and is kind of non-existent. When we, when we have the parade down US One and you literally do not see any businesses open or maybe one person on the inside. I know that our, our route was shortened, so we are going to take that back to what it has always been, going through the Northwest and the Southwest over there by Addicks Middle School. And, yeah, I, I would like a little more collaboration or even just inviting more of the city out to, to the gala. We did have an additional table set aside, but I know that communication was sort of lacking because there was a lot that was going on in these last several weeks within our committee. I thank Parks and Recreation for putting on the basketball tournament and everything that they, they did in public services for, for keeping the place clean. And I, I just look forward to continuing to, to grow the event and I hope to see you all. The mayor was being, getting beat up by his son the whole day at the piece in the park, but his son had a great time out there, so thank you for, for coming out. I do have my, the, the quote that Commissioner Llewellyn, you asked how much was it going to be for the entire, the program? It's going to be around, I think, $8,700 for the program. So around that number, give or take. So I would like to know, again, if I have authorization to use my funding. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that or not. Okay. Eighty-seven hundred. Yes, the literacy program. So a thousand from Commissioner Salvino, okay, and 2,000 from Vice Mayor. Thank you so much. And lastly, I don't know if we are able to call a special meeting or a different type of workshop. There are things that have come to light that I do think that as a board, we definitely need to address. Things that I want to address that, that, that have been going around in the email that we received. So I don't know if we want to do a workshop, if we can do a, or I'm, I'm not sure if we can do a shade session, if that is legal or not. But I definitely want to have some type of a workshop to discuss the email that we received earlier, maybe this last week, late last week or whenever that was that we received that email because I've had several conversations and I am very concerned about, about the things that I've been hearing.
As long as we make it public and give prior notice, we can meet. You know, if we meet in a quorum and discuss it, yeah.
You're, you're talking about a workshop or you're talking about a shade session?
Workshop, shade session, either or.
They're not the same. They're not the same. That's why I need to know.
No, it has to be in the public view, yeah.
It can't be a shade session.
Okay, so I, I am asking if you all want to do, do a workshop sooner than later regarding this?
Yeah, I'd say we coordinate it with Maxine.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, thank you. And that, that is the rest of my comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner James. Commissioner Salvino?
Okay. You know, pretty much, one of the things that I wanted, I was going to talk about a little bit about the Prestige Club that Commissioner Davis and I both attended to. You know, just to show you how well we are in this city and how we participate, there was probably, I would say, between 400 and 500 people there. And there were people there that were, you know, table sponsors or title sponsors. And each table was $1,750 for a table of 10. And they sold out probably, but I would say there's had to be at least 30, 35, maybe 40 tables, so it was busy. The fun part about it was, is that it was a 70s theme and I'm not going to show you my picture. Maybe I'll put a little thing up there next time and show you, but... That's a sculpture, right? But, but you know, the, the thing about this, as, as we had done when you all contributed to the, you know, the school programs, this Prestige Club has done amazing things. It's, it's been around a while and there's the people that are involved in it. And at one time, the Dana, City of Dana had also given them, I think, $5,000 back. We used to disperse that. So I'll probably be asking for some of my contingency to go towards that because of the, what they do. They give away a lot of money, I mean, a lot of presents to the kids. We also did etiquette programs for them at Tropical Acres where we teach the children how to tie their ties, how to pull the chair out for the ladies, how to do dance steps and, and other, other types of things that are there. Then we also have a Bamford Park out in Davie. We cook over for 3,000 people. We have barbecue out there annually for them, for women in distress and other children's programs. And they, they, they get sent out. So I mean, there's so many different programs. And then I know that Joyce, I wasn't around at the Christmas time, but she hand-delivered, they hand-delivered 1,750 presents to each, that many people. They had, there was a lot of stuff going on. So this program is really huge and, and it's, it's, it was so much fun. But just to let you know, there was, there was one prize, one prize that they only auctioned off. Well, they auctioned off two, but the main prize was auctioned off. And, and I want you to know that a Dana Beach resident that I invited gave $6,000 for that prize. So just to show you that we as a Dana residents, we support. And it, and this, I mean, that's just one resident. I mean, there's, this, this was not all Dana Beach residents. These were people from all over. Some come from even out of state to, to participate. But I have to emphasize this program because it does so, so good for not just children, but just for people in need. And it's, it's dear to my heart. And I know Joyce has really fallen into place with his, what, excuse me, Commissioner Davis has fallen into place like that. So, but I just wanted to talk about that a little bit, but I had a great time. And I just want to keep it in mind, if next year, you know, maybe I can send out an invite to everybody else earlier and if you'd like to see what it's about, the people that came out there. We did have three of the developers go out there and buy tables. Milton, Jay Milton bought a table. The gentleman that we do that CRA through bought a table, Daniel. And then we had Alcee Simble from Oasis Project bought some seats and Edward Abbo bought some seats. So I mean, these, the developers are keeping true to their word that they are participating and staying involved in all the things that we asked them to do to, to do so. I just feel it's important to let the public know that the developers are out there participating, the City of Dana Beach residents are participating and the program is doing a great job for people in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to talk about. I usually do participate at, at a minimum in the parade for the MLK organization. And unfortunately, this year I woke up and was sick and could not participate and was unable to be there. I didn't want to get anybody else sick and I didn't want to get sicker and be out for the entire week. So my apologies for not being there, but I know that it's usually a lovely parade. It, it does need some help with the attendance. That, that seems to have always been an issue. But in any event, I don't really have a whole lot else because I haven't really been able to go very, very many places in the last couple of weeks. I've been stuck in trial and preparing for trial. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over and thank you all for staying and being here tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Llewellyn. Okay, time for...
Okay, time for my comments. All right, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. So, I'll touch on, uh, the MLK celebrations that we had. Uh, over the weekend, we had the gala at IT Parker Center, I thought it was a wonderful event. It was very informative, uh, so, some of the presentations were touching and, uh, I was very impressed. And, uh, it was, it was great to be a part of the community and to attend that with, um, with my family. And, uh, yeah, on Monday, it was my first parade as mayor of Dania Beach and it was a great time. Uh, you know, I, I thought, I thought it was very well organized. Uh, it was, you know, the, well, the Mustangs, the Mustangs that we got were wonderful, my driver was great. Uh, like, yeah, we, we, I know we say promote it, but we've had Martin Luther King Parade in Dania forever. Uh, we, and we haven't had it since two thousand nineteen, so maybe it kinda offset people and no one really knew. But, um, I'll definitely make sure that we could promote it more next year. Excuse me, I got a frog in my throat.
Okay.
Uh, last week, I was in Washington DC, uh, as representative of Dania Beach. I attended the National Conference of Mayors as a representative of our city. And I'll tell you, it was refreshing to be in the heart of politics and not experience any partisanship. You know, mayors have no party lines, I just say mayors because it was a mayors convention, but yeah, commissioners, mayors, we have no party lines. And, uh, we work for everybody in the community. And what we covered up there, we covered everything from youth sports to major federal grant programs to the environment. Um, it, it, it's, it, it, it was, uh, very instrumental in, in, in just my short role here of being the mayor for two months. And, you know, our whole, there's many focuses that we had, but we wanna bring pride and a sense of belonging in our community and no one left out and I think we're all agreeing to that. And last year, I found this out, more Americans applied for small business loans last year than ever before. And that, that should resonate throughout our city and let us know that we, we wanna help our small businesses. We wanna support them and point them in the right direction. And we want to let them know that they can receive assistance when it's, when they qualify for it and, and, you know, you never know unless you ask and, and that's our job, is to let these small businesses know that they can receive help either from, you know, grant money through, uh, the CRA, there's, there's resources available for them. And, you know, we wanna tap into it for it and apply and qualify for it so we can receive grant money. Uh, the federal government, that's what I realized, they give us many tools that we need to get what we need done. And they don't tell us what to do, they just provide us with the tools for how we can use them. And so, we covered everything from, I won't get too deep in it, from the bipartisan infrastructure law, the Inflation Reduction Act, you know, that has to do with climate change and pollution control directly in our community, Chips and Science Act. Um, you know, there's clean energy, there's benefits and tax breaks, rooftop and community solar. These, these are many ideas that we could all look into as the community. We wanna have a sustainable future and we wanna be on the forefront of technology as a city. We could be a smart city in Dania Beach with everything that we're reinvesting in our community. Um, so, yeah, that touches on Washington DC. I'm looking forward to bringing, uh, all the ideas, all the co- contacts, the connections. You know, there's a lot of wisdom rolling around up there and, uh, I just try to absorb as much as possible and I look forward to working with, uh, the staff and the commissioners to apply what I've learned. Okay, so moving on from that, I want to speak about the Arts and Seafood Festival. I think it's coming up in about two months. Um, you know, the Arts and Seafood Celebration we've had, it's had some success, some years have been better than others. Uh, it used to be the Tomato Festival, back in the day, I used to attend it. And so, what I'm getting at here is, I spoke with our president of the Historical Society, Joanna Grenette, and I am going to donate, uh, two thousand dollars out of my contingency plan for the Historical Society to have a historical booth at the Arts and Seafood Festival. And, you know, I, I, it's not just gonna be a booth that, I know we had a little booth, but I, I want this to be a little more interactive. Me and Joanna touched on it, uh, briefly, but, you know, you need, you need the money to start rolling. So, um, I'm giving her two thousand dollars to start and I think, eh, you know, it'll be very positive and it'll be, it'll be a light, nice lesson for people to learn who visit our Art and Seafood Festival. Excuse me? Okay, no one has an issue? All right, perfect, okay, if you guys wanna throw in money, you can. Uh, and, uh, I would also like to recognize, it is, uh, lifelong resident of Dania Beach, Jimmy Peterman. It's his eightieth birthday today. And he's the president of College Gardens Home Garden Association, I've gotten to know him very well. And, uh, I'm gonna try and swing by his house maybe after this meeting if I can. So, uh, yeah, just wanted to say happy birthday to him. I always wanna appreciate our lifelong residents who give back to our community so much, just like Mr. Peterman. And that's it. Um, now we can move on to item twelve for appointments. Okay. It's on you, right Eve? Oh, sorry, clerk.
Yes, Commissioner Salvino has an appointment for the Marine Advisory Board. Did you want to appoint Christopher Bostwick? No? Would you like to appoint?
Well, I was waiting for, through the line now, I'm sorry, excuse me. Jeez. I would like to point, uh, p- 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 point Tony Thackam.
Do you have his contact information?
Uh, I will get it to you.
I think he's on the Marine Advisory Board too, right?
He's on, he's on the what?
He's on the Marine Advisory Board as well, right?
That's why I'm putting him on, the Marine Advisory Board.
Okay, perfect.
Was that, that's what we're doing, right, Marine Advisory Board?
Yeah.
Yeah. He was on it before, I'm sure the contacts are there, he took a, a little time off, lays back. But if you need the contact information, I can get it for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion to approve? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, Tony Thackam is on Marine Advisory Board. Now to section thirteen, administrative reports, we have our city manager.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, eh, great job in Washington DC. Um, thank you. Um, so, we're getting ready for the first week of February to go to Tallahassee. I know that Commissioner Davis will be going, eh, Vice Mayor Llewellyn and, and you mayor and myself, so we're very excited about that. Um, Candido Sosa Cruz and I met today and, um, we're preparing the, the documents for, for Tallahassee. I know we have a meeting on Friday with Representative Cassell, um, so we'll give her a heads up. So, we look forward for, for, um, for her support. Eh, Deputy Manager Sosa Cruz and I met, um, the day right after you all had your, your CRA workshop. And, um, we're gonna be making a presentation. Um, I know that Candido has been working with, with Eleanor and Corinne in regards to the revisions to our signage code. Um, and additionally, um, we, we took a walk throughout, um, the area of federal and also our parking garage. And we also wanna bring forward an, an initiative to activate, um, a, a, a parking garage that's underutilized. Because our, our goal would be, how can we attract more people to downtown? How can we make their experience better? And, um, you know, like Commissioner Davis, uh, Commissioner James was saying, you know, our, our downtown is kinda deadish. So, we need to think outside the box. And when, when I drive down other, you know, areas like Miracle Mile and I see that, you know, they have an advantage because they can park on, you know, on the street. We cannot park on the street and it's an FDOT street. So, how do we get them to come to the next street and use their parking garage? So, we're going to be, in this presentation, look at key areas that we can let visitors, um, and patrons that are going to be coming to our hotels, that are gonna come to our restaurants and shop in our stores, hey, you can park right here in the parking garage. So, we're gonna be looking at, at that game plan. Um, I also think it would be a great idea, um, to look at that Martin Luther King route and, and see if, you know, we've developed a great, great partnership with Dania Point. Um, and there's a, a buzz in there and maybe we can swing through there. But I think it's, it's important and maybe we can work with the CRA to see what we could do to, to get our local businesses par- participating and kinda, um, see what we could do. Maybe perhaps have someone, a liaison to the board, eh, Commissioner James.
Commissioner James?
No, that's, that's what I was gonna bring up at the next CRA meeting, to have someone, um, you know, we have someone at the table from Parks and Rec when it comes down to the MLK festivities that helps us with some of the things that we're doing. And, um, I mean, we specialize in these Bravo visits, uh, you know, wanna see it at work and seeing how we could, um, engage, uh, the business corridor to, to, um, be invited in. But I think one other thing that would help is not closing the entire US one. This year, the entire US one was closed, whereas most of the times, only half of US one is closed and then you still have the traffic for other cars. It was deserted. It literally was, um, deserted all the way down there. And so, if you have the entire street closed, you have no traffic, you know, um, no business engagement, you know, you kinda get a dead parade.
Yeah, I, I think when something doesn't work out, we can't continue to stick a square peg in a round hole. I think we just need to think outside the box and, and, and come up with, with, um, with more opportunities and, and, and great ideas. So, we're all excited about that. Um, eh, our, our CFO and, and our deputy, um, city manager and I met at length last week to really discuss a strategy and a game, and a game plan for, um, budget season. And I know we had discussed that last year, that by the time you get your draft budget, it's pretty much done. So, I know how much, um, this budget means to all of you, the priorities of the strategic plan. So, what we did was put together a series of dates, so you guys can already start looking at your calendars. We have a, a multitude of things that are gonna be coming up. So, basically, in January, um, which is this month, I've, I've, uh, appointed an administrative budget committee that includes myself, Deputy City Manager, our, our CFO and the members of his team. We are also going to be, um, in incorporating Colin Donnelly because we want somebody representing, you know, your adopted strategic plans, so it's right there front and, front and center. Um, in February, all the department directors and their teams will meet to commence the budget preparation and examine the needs and wants. Um, in March, the budget committee will schedule one-on-ones with all departments. Um, we are looking to meet with all of you in a workshop, um, in April, either the week of April the tenth or April the seventeenth. Um, cause we're working around Easter and Passover, so we're gonna have Maxine reach out to you, um, whether you all prefer a four to seven or you prefer a five to eight. But I just wanted you to look at the week of April tenth and April seventeenth. And if there's any dates that are not good, let us know, but Maxine will reach out to you. And then in May, we will circle back with all the department directors and my committee for the second round to perfect the draft budget. On June first, we receive the preliminary numbers from the property appraiser and, which is the estimated tax, taxable value for our city. Then July first is, it's a Saturday, so this will most likely come June thirtieth. Our city will receive the, the certification of tax rule for twenty twenty-three from our property appraiser. So, then we will be bringing the draft budget to you on Tuesday, July eleventh, which is a regular commission meeting. Um, and, and this is what we've been doing for the past several years. And at that time, you all will set, um, your, your mileage rate, you will have your, your draft budget. And then we would look to take, uh, uh, a pause, take the, um, the recommended city commission recess um, from July the twelfth until August the eleventh. We would have no commission meeting on July the twenty-fifth, which is the second commission meeting, and the first meeting in August, which would be August the eighth. On August, Tuesday the fifth through Thursday the seventeenth, we would have the one-on-one with the elected officials, um, with the city manager, our deputy city manager and our CFO and times will be scheduled via your chief of staff. August, Monday the twenty-eighth through the week of the thirtieth, we would shoot you some dates and times, either the four to seven or the five to eight. Let us know if Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday would be best for you. We would have the final commission workshop. And then in September, we would have the two mandated, um, budget hearings. But we cannot give you those dates yet because we have to hear for the county to put their date in place and also for the school board. I know how active you all are and with, with your kids and your families, we wanted to bring that forward so you guys could be taking a look at your, um, at your schedules. Um, the city, the city commission has set aside one hundred thousand dollars from this year's budget, uh, for marketing and promoting the city. However, we have yet to pick a date for the workshop to brainstorm and to bring those suggestions. I know that, that our staff is also working on suggest, some suggestions for you as well. Um, so, we wanted to see, uh, these dates for a tour of our workshop. Wednesday the twenty-second of February, Thursday the twenty-third of February. Um, other possible date to consider is four-thirty to six-thirty before the commission meeting on Tuesday the twenty-eighth. So, um, I know Maxine had sent that, but I just wanted to see if you could check your schedule so we can at least get that workshop. So, for that marketing workshop, for the hundred K that you've set aside, we have Wednesday the twenty-second of February, Thursday the twenty-third of February, either four to six or five to seven. Other possible date to consider is Tuesday the twenty-eighth of February, since there's no CRA, we could do four-thirty to six-thirty. So, whatever works.
Um, I... Oh, I can't, I can't do the twenty-eighth, I could do the other two. I could do the other two, but I, I wanted to ask a question, um, because some, some of the workshops may not be long. If we could possibly think about, because of all these dates, consolidating some of the workshops and maybe having the two in one? If you could think of two that you don't think would be long? Or if we could kinda schedule two and if we don't get finished with one of them in that time, then to roll over to another date? Just, just something to think about, but I'm not, I'm not available on the twenty-eighth. I am available on the twenty-second and the twenty-third from the five to seven.
So, the vice, I, I'm, uh, sorry, Commissioner, um, Salvino, you're on a cruise that week. And then the twenty-eighth, eh, Commissioner James is not available. Maxine and I will go back to...
Are we not, can we not do it before that?
Let's see. Would you all be available, let's see? Maybe we can knock it out? Would you all be available?
What about the fifteenth? Is everyone available on the fifteenth?
The fifteenth of?
Valentine's Day the fourth.
Oh, February the fifteenth.
I mean, that's our chicks there, I guess.
Can you, can, are you all available, um, either next Monday or Tuesday? Tuesday the thirty-first of December? I mean, I'm sorry, January? Tuesday the thirty-first of January?
I am. A week from today.
We have that mock commission meeting, but that evening, yeah, we could do it.
Yeah.
From five to seven, next Tuesday, a week from today?
Five to seven, Tuesday the thirty-first.
Again?
Well, just come back a little early.
Can, can he, um, can you attend remotely? Remotely, you have a cough? Okay, why don't we roll with the, with the thirty-first of January, which is the Tuesday, five to seven?
That's our workshop?
Okay.
Yeah, that will be, uh, uh, that workshop? Yeah. Okay, so, um, our chief of sa- staff will send you a calendar invite, um, for next Tuesday the thirty-first. And already start thinking of some, some ideas and thinking. Everybody good? Okay, um, eh, Madam Clerk, do we have to make the, the motion to accept your, your recess? Um, I believe that's how we did it last year, where we didn't meet on the, on the second meeting in July and the first meeting in August. I think that we should do it officially like we did last year. Make a motion?
Second, all in favor? All right, you may as soon as you pass.
Okay, thank you so much, this concludes my, um, manager's report.
Thank you, manager, all right. Uh, city attorney, Eve Bootses?
Good evening, everyone, I don't have a report tonight, thank you.
Wonderful, all right, city clerk?
Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, February fourteenth, tw- uh, twenty twenty-three at five-thirty, CRA board meeting. And Tuesday, February fourteenth, twenty-three, seven PM, city commission meeting. That's it.
Okay. All right, meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Great job. Wait, wait, no. You did a great job. Great job.
In the summer? Pretty good, that was pretty impressive.
Hey, good job, Mayor.
Thank you, good job, too.